Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 24th, 2013 meeting of the Glendale City Council being called order at 6:02 PM. May we have a go-call?
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Montero.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Just so you know, my two, our two colleagues are away at an airport conference. If I'd gone with them, we wouldn't have a council meeting tonight. Okay. The flight salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Najarian. An invocation by City Clerk Artic Kusakian. Please stand.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
For the invocation. On September 24th, 1957, President Eisenhower ordered 1,000 U.S. military personnel to mobilize in defense of a group of young Americans whose lives were in danger. The troops were not deployed, but to a far-off corner of Southeast Asia, but on our own shores, ordered to Little Rock, Arkansas. Their mission was to protect the peace as nine young American citizens attended their first day of school. They would be known as the Little Rock Nine, and the military presence would remain throughout their school year at Little Rock Central High School. Terrence Roberts, one of those brave young students who now lives in Pasadena, later said, "I want us to think seriously about living in a society where some people are privileged, but others are not, and we take it as a matter of course that this is the way it is." Tonight, we pray and give thanks for the brave people like Terrence and so many others who have helped in this generation forge a more perfect union even as their own safety was threatened. And we pray that as we remember this important date, we remember that the enemies against the principles of our great nation are not only on foreign shores, but can lie within our own hearts as prejudice, ignorance, envy, and intolerance. We give thanks for those who have fought for justice and remember these brave men and women 56 years later, as we pray for wisdom, peace, and love tonight, always and throughout the world.
Amen.
Amen.
The agenda...
Wait, before the city clerk gives a report, let's remember if any of the three of us leave the dais, we immediately recess, okay? So, we hope we don't get calls or other emergencies. I may get ones, so, so you know, okay. Mr. Kusakian, your report, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the agenda for the September 24th, 2013 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, September 19th, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is next?
3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of October 1st, 2013.
Oh, Mr. Ochoa, in a new seat.
There you go. Yes, sir. What we have looking forward to October 1st is a series of meetings. There's nothing beyond minutes on the Glendale Housing Authority. We do have a joint City Council Housing Authority agenda, however, and on that we have one item, Director of Community Services and Parks regarding the FY 1213 Winter Shelter Program Year-End Report. We have a special City Council meeting. It's a public hearing. Director of Public Works regarding conditional vacation of the first public alley east of Central Avenue and south of Wilson Avenue, Vacation Case Number 172V. We have, in, that's the last afternoon meeting, in the evening, we have a series of items under agenda, under Presentations and Appointments. We have a proclamation in the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have a proclamation designating month of October as Walktober, International Walk to School Month. We have a presentation of star graduates from Hoover High School, Alejandra Vargas and Marybel Rivera. We have consent items. We have minutes. We have the Chief Information Officer and General Manager, GWP, purchase of hardware, software, and associated support for supplementary capacity to the existing backup and recovery system. Fire Chief, destruction of records at the Verdugo Fire Communication Center. Directors of Public Works and Community Development, Urban Greening Project Grant for Sustainable Communities. General Manager of GWP, GWP Power Content for Calendar Year 2012. Under Adoption of Ordinances, we have the ordinance authorizing issuance of electric revenue bonds. We have the ordinance amending the zoning related to housing definitions and permitted use charts in accordance with items identified in the housing element and analysis of impediments to fair housing choice programs. Under Action Items, we have Director of Library Arts and Culture, Brand Library and Art Center Shelving Project. We have, under Community Services and Parks, Amendment to Existing Lease Agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which is also known as AT&amp;T. We have Chief of Police, replacement of Police Joint Air Support Unit MD 520N Helicopter. We have Chief of Police, purchase of a GPS Primary Display and Helicopter N103CG and video downlink receivers and equipment to be used with police helicopters, grant funded by the UWC Initiative for 11 and 12. We have City Manager, replacement of Equipment and Software Associated Integration Services and Training Related to GTV6 Live Broadcasting Video Production and Media Archiving. We have One Hearing, Director of Community Development, Appeal DRB Approval, Application Number PDR 1234093 for property located at 4201 Pennsylvania Avenue.
That's enough for one week. Okay. What is next, please?
At 3B, we have Introduction of Dr. David Veier of Glendale Community College.
Thank you.
And we have Board Member Ann Ressler.
Hello. Hi, David.
Hey. Mayor Weaver, City Council Members, City Staff, and City Clerk. It's a great pleasure to be here this evening to introduce to you Dr. David Veier, our new Superintendent President, and tell you a little bit about him. He started with us on July 1st and comes from Sacramento where he served eight years as President of American River College, one of four community colleges in the Los Rios District, and one of the largest community colleges in the state, by the way. Dr. Veier served for 15 years as Chief Executive Officer of the Community College League of California, an organization of locally elected governing board members and Chief Executive Officers of California's 112 community colleges. An Army veteran, Dr. Veier holds a Judas Doctorate from Drake University School of Law and was recognized by his undergraduate alma mater, Western Illinois University, with the Distinguished Alumni Achievement Award. Dr. Veier and his wife Jane are pleased to be living in Glendale. They just closed escrow last week on a home, and he tells me that they're very well moved in. And he is here in Glendale with his son and daughter-in-law, who also live in Glendale. So, I would like to just share that in our process for selecting a Superintendent President, it's very inclusive, and it was absolutely unanimous among faculty, classified administrators, and the community members that served on the committee that Dr. Veier would be the person to lead us from now on. We're looking for a long partnership. I know a lot of you have had the pleasure of meeting him and will enjoy knowing him further, and we're looking forward, under Dr. Veier's leadership, to have a really wonderful relationship with the city. Thank you, and Dr. Veier.
So, David, you found a nice, cheap house in Glendale?
We found a very nice house in Glendale.
Not cheap.
But we are proud to be residents of Glendale and to have it be made official now, and it is really very, very special to us. I have been very impressed with the welcome that we've received from community leaders, from citizens throughout, and from many of our local elected officials. It clearly is a town of friendship, of partnerships, and of success, and we're proud to be a part of it. I've been very pleased to find how many people are proud to be alums of Glendale Community College, and all of the people that I have visited with who really recognize Glendale Community College is a true asset to this community. With the education it provides at our three locations, the Garfield Campus, the Verdugo Campus, and in Montrose, the Professional Development Center, we really are about serving this community. Mayor Weaver, it was a pleasure to have you come and visit me. City Manager Ochoa, thank you so much for inviting me to join you at lunch and to learn more about this great city. It's just very, very symbolic of the kind of welcome we've received, and we look forward to many years of outstanding partnerships with the city, the Community College District, and the Glendale Unified School District. Pleasure to be with you all tonight.
Good, as an alumni, I'm very pleased to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. What is next?
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Najarian.
I have a brief one. Mr. Mayor, I was meeting with several individuals earlier this week who have come up with the idea of creating a City of Glendale debit card, which may be helpful to generating revenues for the city as well as, directly to the city, as well as encouraging shopping in our downtown district, and I think I will invite staff from Economic Development to meet with these people and report back to the City Council as to some possibilities.
I think that makes money for the city is great. Any other comments?
Actually, sir, can we do a staff comment?
Well, let me think about it. Okay, go ahead.
Because our illustrious Fire Chief has an announcement for your edification.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, I'm here to invite the community out to our annual awards luncheon, which will be held on October 2nd from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the Glendale Hilton once again. This luncheon, we take the time to recognize the outstanding members of the organization and the community that have served so well over the last year. We're very proud of all of our members, but a few stand out each and every year, and those are the ones that we really want to recognize and present to the community. And this event is not just about the members of the Glendale Fire Department. We'll also be recognizing members in the community who have performed outstanding acts throughout the course of the last year, the last 12 months. So, we would like you to come out and participate. The price for the tickets are $75. You can give us a call at our, at this number, area code 818-550-5613. You can also check our Glendale Fire Department website for more information, but once again, it's going to be an outstanding event. This event is once again hosted by the Glendale Fire Department and the Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club. And what we do with the proceeds from the event is we, any extra monies that's earned, we sponsor kids to the local fire academy, which is at Glendale Community College, the Verdugo Fire Academy. So, we interview kids here in the community, and if they have needs, that's what we do with the additional fund. So, the monies are going towards a good cause and producing future firefighters, and you'll hear some of the alumnis who actually were sponsored to the Verdugo Fire Academy speak at the award luncheon. If there's any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
I've been to 17 of them now. I guess I won't miss this one either.
All right. Thank you.
It's a good event for old Seattle.
Thank you.
Try to go if you can.
And have flyers on the back table if anyone would like to grab one who's here tonight, or just give us a call at the, at the firehouse, and we can give you additional information.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
And if it pleases the council, can we do one more on behalf of Glendale Youth Alliance?
It pleases me, but go ahead.
Garnet?
Good evening.
GYA?
Yes. I'm Karina Gregorian with the Glendale Youth Alliance. We're excited to announce the Glendale Youth Alliance Second Annual Art Exhibit Fundraiser, which will be held on November 7th, 6:00 p.m. at the Glendale Forest Lawn Museum Hall of Crucifixion Resurrection. We're honored to have Mr. Rosme Gregorian as our curator this year. Mr. Gregorian is a local businessman, architect, award-winning filmmaker, and avid art collector and the longest-serving commissioner on the City of Glendale's Art and Culture Commission. We have extended our deadline for art submission if there are any artists interested in participating. The deadline is now September 27th. They can visit our website to obtain the proposal form, or call our office at 818-548-2714. We currently have 47 artists, 167 pieces of artwork submitted. Admission to the event is free. We will have hors d'oeuvres and wine available for a $25 donation. We hope you will be able to join us. It's going to be a great event. All the proceeds from the art exhibit will go back into GYA programs in serving the youth of our community.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No notice, you'll hear it next week, but Oktoberfest up in Montrose is next Saturday from noon time on, so, that's one you can't miss either. The Brockwurst are always great. And if it's a hot day, the beer isn't bad either. So, I'm sure you'll hear announcements about that next Tuesday. Okay. What is next, please?
Next is Consent Items. Following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Okay. We're going to be, on the request of staff, we'd be pulling C and D?
My mistakes are only D.
Just D. Okay. Just pulling D off. Is there a motion for the others?
I will move the balance of the consent calendar.
One second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Sananian. Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Next, please.
Next is 5D, as in David.
We would carry that to next week.
That would be carried over to next week. The next item would be Oral Communications. The Oral Communications has been split into two portions. This first portion is for three-minute community event announcements. No cards have been submitted for this portion.
You're kidding? Wow. Great. Let's leap to the next item.
Next item is Action Items. 8A is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding transfer of maintenance, operation, and management responsibility of Stengel Field to Glendale Unified School District. At 8A1 is motion authorizing execution of memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and Glendale Unified School District transferring responsibilities to GUSD for a two-year period commencing on October 1st, 2013, and ending on September 30th, 2015.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. Rarely do we have an opportunity to bring you an item that makes sense for so many different stakeholders as we do tonight. At Stengel Field, we have a tremendous asset for the community and one that is used primarily by our partners at GUSD and GCC. And at this point, we have an opportunity to work with them even more collaboratively to alleviate the burden on Mr. Duran's departments and yet provide GCC and GUSD precisely what they want and need to further the aims of their respective programs. Jess, do you want to give the details on it?
Just let me say one thing. Stengel Field is named after Casey Stengel, probably the most famous manager in baseball with the New York Yankees, at least when I was growing up. And Mark McGuire, you've probably heard about him, used to play on that field, and he could hit the ball not only out of the park, but over the Verdugo Wash outside the park. That was before steroids. He could still hit, he could still hit good. He did not, he did not need any assistance, and I guess he's a great coach for the Dodgers now. Okay, Mr. Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. Members of the City Council, Stengel Field, in terms of more background analysis, Stengel Field is owned, operated, and maintained by the City of Glendale, including the landscape maintenance of the ball field itself. It is a classic historical ballpark built around 1949 with dimensions and amenities that are suitable for minor league or semi-professional baseball. For a very long time, Stengel Field has been the home field for the Crescent Valley High School baseball team and the Glendale Community College baseball team. These two groups are the primary, primary users of the field, and they have it scheduled for their use for most of the year. And needless to say, they are very attached to the stadium. In between Crescent Valley High School and Glendale Community College, use of the field of the city does schedule use of the field by the Glendale Little League and the Babe Ruth League, and issue permits for rental of the field by other organizations, albeit on a very limited basis. In addition, in the last three years, Stengel Field has also served as the home of the Angelinos, a minor league caliber baseball club. Crescent Valley High School and Glendale Community College don't pay the city for use of the field. However, they do provide in-kind services in helping the city maintain the field with donations of labor and materials, and sometimes sharing in the cost of special upgrades or repairs such as laser leveling the field on an annual basis. This year, leading up to and during the 2013 Crescent Valley High School baseball season, there were questions regarding the quality of the maintenance of the field. As a result, City Staff and the Glendale Unified School District staff held meetings, and what evolved was a mutually beneficial agreement to transfer the responsibility for operation and maintenance of the field, including programming and scheduling, from the City of Glendale to the Glendale Unified School District, with the caveat that Glendale Unified School District would continue to guarantee that Glendale Community College would be able to continue to use the field as its home field for games and practices consistent with the schedule and times on the field that Glendale Community College has enjoyed in the last five years. So, that was one of the primary conditions that the city would agree to turn over the operation and maintenance of the field. In addition, we made the same condition with regard to the Glendale Little League and the Babe Ruth League, that they be allowed to maintain the schedules that they've enjoyed on the field for the last five years. Initial term of the MOU is for two years, and it would begin October 1st, 2013, and end September 30th, 2015, with two one-year renewal options, which would be at the discretion of the City of Glendale. Now, during our meetings with GUSD staff, we did spend a considerable amount of time discussing, and we did agree to, to basic field maintenance standards, which are detailed in the MOU. So, we spent a lot of time deciding what would be the maintenance standards of the All field maintenance will be at the cost of the Glendale Unified School District. They do have the capacity. They already have baseball fields and football fields that they maintain. Community Services and Parks Department projects that we will be saving in personnel, utilities, equipment, and supplies approximately $120,000 per year, which we, which are resources that we could divert to other new projects that have come online recently that did not have corresponding, corresponding maintenance and operation budgets, such as Central Park, Riverwalk, Duran Gardens, and the Maryland Mini Park, which we are, going to start construction on, on October 1st. So, this would allow us to divert the resources from Stengel Field to our other park facilities.
Understanding, I just want to underscore that part, understanding that we really don't utilize, as City of Glendale, the field at Stengel. It's primarily for the benefit of the, of the school district and the community college district, and then the Little Leagues are able to use it from, as dictated by past practice. But as Jess indicates, and he's much too modest in terms of what the impact has been on the city in delivering still more park facilities despite the recession, despite the downturn, while not only maintaining the same level of budget, but actually reducing the CSP parks maintenance budget, still delivering impressive new quality-of-life venues for our residents. So, the savings in, in staff time alone and transferring that to other park venues is something that is, is a major driver for our recommendation in this matter. Sorry, Jess.
Of course. Under the MOU, GUSD will pay for water and electricity in association with the use of the field. In terms of the stadium structure, we, we cannot ignore that, but due to structural deterioration, due to water intrusion over many years, it has been closed and it has been nonusable since the spring of 2011. The stadium structure, as you may or may not know, consists of two below-ground level locker rooms, restrooms, showers, and offices, a ground-level concession stand, and restrooms and equipment storage rooms, and built-in bleachers. The built-in bleachers were designed in such a way that the bottom and the installation of the bleachers serves as a roof membrane to the, the building, and over the years, water has continued to make its way through the, the structural part of the building, and it's, it's, we now question the public safety worthiness of the building, so it's, it's closed. The current seating capacity, as a result of that, the current seating capacity of the built-in bleachers is restricted to only the first two rows, which tolls, tolls approximately 300 seats, which does make it difficult for the home team, such as Crescent Valley High School or Glendale Community College, to host big rivalry games, where in the case of CV High School, can attract up to 1,000 fans. So, so, it still presents a hardship for the high school. In terms of accommodating the high school and the college, college's equipment, storage, and dressing room needs, Community Services and Parks did clear an area and allowed for the placement of eight storage bins and modular units along the north or left-field side of the ball field. Staff does plan to return to City Council on October 8th to seek direction on various options that we could pursue to begin to address the structural condition of Stengel, Stengel Field building and the bleachers, including the potential for rehabilitation and preservation of the existing structure and what that would entail, including the option for demolition of the existing structure and construction of a new structure and what that would entail, or demolition and no new construction except for bleachers. So, we will come back to you with a, a more comprehensive report on those different options and the ramifications of those options, and including potential partnerships with either the school district or the school district and the college in finding a solution to dealing with the current status of the Stengel Field Stadium. You know by now that the Glendale Unified School District, for their part, approved the execution of the same MOU at their meeting last Tuesday, and again, with the complete understanding that the stadium structure was not usable and that bleacher sitting capacity is very, very limited, but also with the understanding that there will be ongoing discussion between the city and the GUSD and Glendale Community College regarding determining a solution for the Stengel Field Stadium building. In the meantime, City Staff and GUSD's staff feel that the MOU to transfer responsibility for the field maintenance makes sense for both of us, so we are here requesting council's concurrence with that, and I'm available, I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
About 65 years old, water intrusion probably is eating away at all the rebar in there. I'm bidding on a tear-down and a rebuild of the facility and to bring it up to current standards. Also, you know, Crescent Valley does their graduation ceremonies there. Those stands are packed, so I don't know, whatever we tell them to do, I don't think it's going to be ready for them, graduation this year.
One of the reasons why we're looking at a relatively short term for this particular MOU is it gives us time, and more importantly, I suppose, it allows GUSD and even GCC time to commit to a future solution. There is a great deal of excitement with GUSD about the challenge and opportunity of raising the funds to replicate the structure that's there, because it's a historic venue, has a lot of history, there is just a, a lot of, of, you know, atmosphere that goes along with that particular venue. So, the idea being that one of the options that you would see going forward is the demolition of the site, replacement temporarily with aluminum bleachers, and allow GCC, or rather GUSD, the opportunity in the community, really, to replace what was there with some level of partnership and participation from the city, but that's a decision that would happen going forward. The decision before you tonight is this notion of, of allowing those folks that use the field most directly to have that responsibility and opportunity to operate it as best they can.
It's got a lot of history, that's for sure. I do have a speaker, colleagues will listen.
Comment.
Oh, do you want to?
Well, let me ask, yeah, let me ask, actually, it's a question. The, the bleachers, you said, are in bad shape, but I don't see that it's a city, when it comes down to city obligations on the repairs, that that's not, we're not obligating ourselves to repair that, except for some changing of the planks and handrails and things like that.
That's, that's correct. That's correct. And depending what we do going forward, we may ultimately want to tear down the existing structure, demolish it, recompact it, and work with GUSD to put in temporary bleachers. The school district understands completely that going forward, if they endeavor to rebuild the structure...
to rebuild the structure, we would love to support them and will support them, but ultimately, that is their obligation. So we are not buying a pig in a poke by doing this and taking on a remodel project that could go haywire.
Okay, that's great. The next question is the hours of operation and the use of the lights on the field. I don't see any restrictions on that. When we go through the list of city ordinances, we sure talked about no smoking and no firearms, but I don't see, you know, no lights after, what's our policy, 9 o'clock or 10 o'clock or something?
Yeah, the lights go off at 10:00, which means that, for the most part, the games and all activities would have to end at around 9:30 to allow enough time for the stadium to be cleared out.
Okay. I don't see where that's included, though.
Yeah, I'd have to double check. That's the current policy, and it's a policy under which both GUSD and Glendale Community College has been operating under, so that won't change.
Let's make sure that we don't get complaints by New Yorkers. And the other thing is advertising revenue on the stadium itself. Do we share any of that? Let's say they've got all sorts of banners, and that's all they get to keep.
They each have their own advertising program.
Okay.
However, revenue off of filming, Jess?
Yes. Yeah. Any filming requests, we reserve the right to be, provided that it's not interfering with the games or practice schedules. Under the MOU, we will be allowed to continue to permit it for filming, and the revenue would be the city's revenue.
And I see that the city gets 12 days a year.
Yes, more than what we use right now.
For the Weaver family softball tournament. They won't have to go too far.
Potentially.
Have enough kids. Don't have enough grandkids yet.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Would you like speaker now? Byron Longpre. Is two minutes good enough, or do you need more? Who'll do it?
Couple more.
Well, you get up to three.
I'll try to be brief. So first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the council for allowing me the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Brian Longpre. I am a Glendale resident, and I'm here to speak about Casey Stengel Field. I'm a former Crescenta Valley baseball player. I grew up playing baseball for Babe Ruth and have used the field quite extensively. I work right here in the City of Glendale, right down the street on Brand Boulevard. So needless to say, my roots here are very deep. On behalf of the many supporters who are here with me tonight, we'd like to express gratitude to you for considering this agenda item and for considering transferring field maintenance to GUSD. We understand the complexity of this issue, but we're here to support you, and we're here to support this agenda item. Stengel Field is something very important to me personally. I know it's something very important to many residents within Glendale. My family played on that field long before. My family coached on that field long before I was born. And I know there are many other residents here who have that same story, and it is a very historic ballpark and something that is very valuable to be, much like the Alex Theater is to many people in Glendale. I've even trained at Glendale, you know, at Stengel Field while I was preparing for my professional baseball career with Toronto Blue Jays. So Stengel Field has provided me a great deal, and I know it's provided Glendale Community College players, families, parents, Crescenta Valley players, families, parents, Babe Ruth, Little League. It's done so much for many people that I hope that you understand how many people in this community really care about this field. And I hope by me being here that you see that there are people out there who feel very, very passionately about this field and that are right behind me in supporting this agenda item. To me and to many other residents of Glendale, this place is more than just a baseball field. It's a home. It's a historical landmark. It's a point of pride in this community, and it's a point of pride with Casey Stengel and with Casey Stengel Field. We're excited, and we feel that this is a start of a successful partnership between the City of Glendale and Glendale Unified School District. I'm very proud, and I'm very grateful that everyone involved here and at home and who are listening here are committed to the children and the kids who play in that field and the many residents who use that field on an annual basis. At the end of the day, this is not about politics. It's not about agendas. It's not about individuals like me or you or anyone else. It's not even about baseball. This is about the kids. It's about the history, and it's about the community. Thank you.
Do you know if Rod Dato dropped down there to see his friend Casey ever so often?
Yes.
I knew Rod. He wrote on one of the rose floats that we, when he took the, managed the Olympic team for the Olympics. Then afterwards, he wrote on our floats. That's how I got to know him. And he had a bat that was his cane with all these signatures of major leaguers on the bat. I don't know whatever happened to that, but with your talking, when it ever gets rebuilt or whatever, there should be a museum wall or something that gives the history of it, because most people today wouldn't know Casey Stengel is. To people like me, that Casey was coaching the only game in town on the radio, because there was no TV even when I was growing up, with the New York Yankees. I would listen to them every week against the hated Brooklyn Dodgers that are now in LA. That's why I'm an Angel fan. So I could never, I could never switch from Yankees to the Brooklyn Dodgers, even though they moved. So yeah, a lot of history there.
I would love to be someone who brings that story out, and I'd love to tell that that history of Glendale.
We'll keep your name on the record. Get it to Jess. And we have your, only thing you might want to add is pass it over and put your phone number on there.
Absolutely.
Since you're local and stuff, we'll be in contact. You brought your team, eh?
Thank you.
Very welcome. Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. Just a comment before I make the motion. Clearly, Stengel Field is very important to a lot of people in the City of Glendale, to its history. There's a lot of emotional attachment to it, and this rearrangement of maintenance obligations has a lot of merit. And of all these people who are sort of stakeholders in this issue, I haven't heard anyone say anything negative about this memorandum of understanding.
How could you?
So with that, I move to approve the memorandum.
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Council members Friedman, Najarian?
Yes.
Montero, Sananian?
Yes, Mayor Weaver.
Hi, and thank you all for coming tonight. We'll make you proud one of these days. We'll get it rebuilt and restored and the history of it along with it. Do Casey proud. Thank you for coming. What is next, please?
Next item at 8B is City Attorney regarding City of Glendale response to June 28th, 2013 Los Angeles County Civil Grand Jury report entitled County of Los Angeles 2012-2013 Civil Grand Jury Final Report. B1 is a resolution approving the response.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. Essentially, and very briefly, the County of Los Angeles produces an annual report, the County of Los Angeles Civil Grand Jury. And unfortunately, as what we saw earlier this year from the civil grand jury, there was a pretty significant case of garbage in, garbage out. There was no contextual appreciation for what was happening as they were considering their assessment of 2012-2013. In the case of Glendale, and as you see reflected in the response penned by the city attorney, two things really stood out and as they manifested in the rankings that the civil grand jury gave to Glendale in particular. The first was this notion that somehow the GWP electric transfer, which has existed, and we've discussed ad nauseam, has existed, has been carried forward by city councils going back generations, was not counted for some reason from the civil grand jury, and thus, as they looked at our general fund budget, found it to be wanting in to the tune of about $20 million, the sum of the general fund transfer from GWP. The second thing was the drop in the general fund fund balance. And there again, with the loss of redevelopment, a monumental shift in local government finance that rivals the advent of Prop 13 and just the way that it impacts local governments. It's no surprise that our general fund fund balance dropped, because we were forced to write off the loan from the redevelopment agency to the city. That is a bona fide obligation of the city, such that even under the Dissolution Act, as soon as we move forward with our notice of completion through the rigmarole that's been set up by the state vis a vis the Dissolution Act, we will be able to, be able to collect on that note. It will be resuscitated under the eyes of the state, and presumably, the civil grand jury will have to make some kind of notation about the erroneous calculation and conclusions that they arrived at with respect to their assessment for, again, 2012-2013. It really is a little disheartening when you consider the preliminary, unprecedented preliminary report that was published by the civil grand jury, the manner in which they have demanded a response to that initial preliminary report, and we did provide that response. But apparently, it went unnoticed at the civil grand jury, because they sent you, Mr. Mayor, another note saying, when are you going to respond to our preliminary report? And we had to send them through the city attorney's office, the note or a response letter that says, we sent it to you. Here is the FedEx tracking number. Here is the receipt that shows that you got it. Yet you still don't appreciate the fact that everything that the civil grand jury noted in terms of moving our ranking, subjective though it was, from I think 47 out of the 88 cities to 57 out of 88 cities, just doesn't seem to jive with the notion that under best management practices, which we steadfastly cling to, which actually are animating factors in that GWP general fund transfer, under those best management practices, we're ranked third out of all the 88 cities. So there's a definite degree of incongruity between what they say, what they're looking for, and ultimately, the conclusions that they arise at, such that, as I said at the beginning, this is a very simple case of garbage in, garbage out, in our professional opinion. I don't know, Mike, if there's anything you want to cover.
Again, I just wanted to highlight, there was good news, is that Glendale ranked third of the 88 cities among our financial practices, which is just, there's a disconnect, obviously, if we have sound financial practices, both in terms of financial reporting, internal audit, internal function, accounting policies and procedures, there's no correlation between our, there is a correlation between that and our financial health, but there's no correlation between that and the grand jury's finding of financial health in the grand jury report.
It's interesting to note, the grand jury had, what, six, seven recommendations? And we concurd in every one of them. We said we're already doing it.
We're doing it.
Already doing it, so.
We're ahead of many of our fellow cities in many of these categories, so.
Unbelievable. But they would say, we're not doing it, yet we're doing them all. So does my colleagues want to discuss this more? No cards.
I have some questions.
Yes.
So our financial practices are pretty good, according to the grand jury. We scored third out of 88. What are the areas in which we didn't score so well that drags us down in general?
Well, again, it's those two factors that Mr. Ochoa just highlighted, just the transfer and then the redevelopment, having to transfer back the loan from 2011. They compared 2012 to 2011. 2012 was the year that we had to give back the agency loan money back to the successor agency. So that obviously affected our cash balance for that year. And then the other factor was the transfer. I mean, literally, that just shows, if you look at the actual number, it just shows where it, that we're $20 million in the red for fiscal year 2012. It's just, it's not true.
And on that note, the transfer is something that they, you would think should have considered in the previous annual reports. Was that the case? Did they consider transfer? Was that ever an issue?
Grand jury doesn't.
Yeah, they do, they do annual reports on different subjects. This was the first one in a while where they focused specifically on our actual financial health. They've looked at our practices before, and we always continue to rank very high in those categories. But as far, since I've been the city attorney, I remember previous, the grand jury, the civil grand jury ever analyzing our fiscal health.
So if I understand correctly, in previous years where we've fared better, the transfer was not something that was heavily taken into consideration?
The only reason was this time is because one citizen of Glendale challenged our position on ballot measures and sent a letter to the grand jury.
And I would point you, the civil grand jury panel, they're the same folks that issued the report on Proposition 218 and Prop 26 and our electric and water transfers. And they actually, each, each report has a subcommittee that's assigned to it, and there are two members that were chaired by both subcommittees. So they definitely were aware of what our situation was in Glendale, what they perceived it to be when they wrote the report on this fiscal health.
And once again, on the 218 issue, again, erroneously applied 218, Prop 218, another tectonic shift in the way that local government is financed in California. Very famously exempted electric services and transfers from electric utilities and only really took aim at water, sewer, and assessment districts. Well, we can't be in violation of 218 if we no longer transfer, and haven't for a few years, based on the vision and wisdom of the council, do not transfer water revenues. We still transfer electric revenues, and that doesn't apply to 218. Prop 26, the follow-up to 218, only is prospective, not retrospective. Until this year, we had not increased electric rates since the adoption of Prop 26, and we still have not adjusted the formula, which would still allow it to be grandfathered under Prop 26. So ipso facto, there is no, there can be no violation of 218 or 26, yet they still applied those lenses, both to the preliminary report, and as you can see here, it carries over to their final report.
Yeah, I would add that Pasadena and Burbank are also in that bottom tier, because those two other cities also have transfers as well, and so they were judged by the same erroneous criteria.
Thank you. The demise and the write-off of the redevelopment, which is the second factor which impacts our placement by this report, now that's, that's something that occurred to every other municipality also, right? So.
Not necessarily, not equally, certainly.
Not equally.
Not equally, to the extent that Glendale, other agencies, other cities, especially older cities, that have mature redevelopment programs, that may have established those redevelopment programs with loans from their general fund to their redevelopment agency, and/or had assets of the agency intermixed with the city, they would be feeling this particular pain a little bit more than a city with a very minimal redevelopment program, where redevelopment just did not play a major role in the lifeblood of the city. So here, that just is not the case.
And on the spectrum, where do we rank in terms of being reliant on redevelopment?
The story of Glendale over the last quarter century, last half-century, is really one of redevelopment and reinvestment. You see it with the Glendale Galleria. You see it certainly with the Americana, Brand Boulevard cars, and much of the other economic development projects, redevelopment projects that form the basis of our sales tax base, because historically, Glendale has been a bedroom community. And to the extent that sales tax was cultivated, it was cultivated largely through redevelopment.
The Disney complex, too?
The Disney complex is a tremendous example of a redevelopment project.
And one more question. This one may be harder to answer, but I have to ask. So let's forget about how they ranked us, because I think we can all agree these rankings are to a great extent subjective, and, you know, they could have ranked us higher, and we could have been praising them today, and they ranked us lower, we're upset about it. Let's say we were at 47, which is where we were ranked last year. What's keeping us from ranking much better than that?
It depends. Favorite word of any city manager, depends. It depends on the criteria that they would use. If they looked only at our best management practices and the business-like manner in which we account for our resources, as you see, we're ranked number three. What hurts us here are those two things, are the precipitous drop in our fund balance, which we can do nothing about, because it's the state law that eliminates the $70 million loan, just like that. That's what hurts us. And then if you're not going to count $20 million of, 12% of our general fund revenue is just wiped off the books, and it just does not count, then we are going to look like we're way overspending, even though we have cut substantial amounts from the general fund over the last several years. So the short answer to your question is, is we probably can't under these criteria.
Stan?
Mr. Turner? Obviously, I stated my objections to the manner in which the grand jury went about this whole investigation. And it started out when they tried to influence the election in Glendale by the use of taxpayer funds. Now, if anyone in the city had done that, if the city manager had gotten up and taken out a publication with city money and stated that. out a publication with city money and stated that Proposition A B, Measure A, B, C should be yes vote, he would be in a lot of hot water right now. He'd probably be prosecuted. But what we have with the grand jury, the report tells a story, and that story is the failure of a process. And the process is collecting volunteers from the community, lay volunteers, volunteers who know nothing about finance, or municipal government, or municipal finance in general, to pass judgment on our city and the other eighty-eight cities in Los Angeles County. Now, these jurors, many of them retired from all walks of life, have no requirement for any experience or training or education in these fields. And they are led along, they're led along by the, is it a member of the district attorney's office, or who?
Well, they're, they are advised by county council.
By county council.
But, I mean, they are the ones, they are, as my understanding, Councilman Najarian, is they are the ones who do most of the legwork and.
Right. So, so we've pointed out numerous flaws in this process, and I think it's a great disservice to the rest of the cities in the county by having county council assemble a group of lay individuals. However, folks, do not fear. There is a better way. There are a group of trained financial experts. There are a group of experts who are well familiar with the best practices and the manners in which cities finance. And it's their job to give opinions, and it's their job to express those opinions at great risk, should they be wrong. And those people are the bond rating agencies. And we got some news just today, didn't we, Mr. Ochoa?
That's correct, sir.
What did the trained experts in municipal finance and government finance and good practices have to announce for this city of Glendale? We, according fifty-seven or sixty-seven, as judged by the clowns on the county grand jury, well, then maybe that's a little harsh when I say that. Let's say the lay people on the city grand jury, those unfamiliar with the two practices of municipal financing, and who are very much led by a county council, who may or may not have an agenda. So, what did the experts have to say today?
Fitch affirmed the AA-plus rating for our general obligations for Glendale.
And along with the, the rating, there were some choice remarks that they made for us, did they not?
They did. They had a number of positive comments with respect to the manner in which we fund, the manner in which we've contained costs, the manner in which the council has curbed benefits and pensions, and maintain still all of our city functions.
Mr. Ochoa, you are being much too modest, and if you permit me to.
Are you reading it, too?
To read from the report. And it says that the city of Glendale received the affirmation of the bonds ratings by Fitch. The rating reflects Glendale's sound reserve levels, good liquidity, satisfactory financial performance, and prudent financial policies and budgeting practices. The city's overall debt burden is projected to remain low. And they talk about our great economy, and they talk about our great profile, and they talk about our reserves being satisfactory. It says that we have a strong financial performance bolstered by good financial management practices. Now, this isn't some group of retired individuals who are collecting, they get a little bit of money, I think, ten dollars a day or something to sit on the grand jury, who are led along by a county council who says, "Look how bad this city is," who don't have the education and training to question those, those remarks by their quote-unquote leader. But here, folks, you'll see it in the newspapers, you'll see it in the financial reports, Glendale is a safe and sound city with excellent financial practices. And to me, we could take that grand jury report and build a bonfire with it, and keep us warm for the upcoming winter months. But here, in my opinion, is the true measure of how Glendale stands and how Glendale operates. So, I think we should send, by Federal Express, with tracking number, to the grand jury, Fitch's remarks and Fitch's comments, and make sure that the county council himself signs for it and reads it.
I don't, I don't mean to make light of the weight these rating gauges should be given, because they also gave Merrill Lynch very high ratings right before it collapsed, and a lot of other banks. But, yeah, you know, obviously, professionals are looking at it. And, you know, considering the fact that some of these factors are factors that were present in the previous years, and should have been considered, and apparently weren't considered, to give too much weight to that, to skew Glendale's standing on the rankings is unfair.
And, maybe, maybe we could send it to the news press, and they print the rating. I don't know, maybe putting too much into it, but the way this council has been attacked for our corruption, everything else relating to how to run this city, it's nice to be able to speak for something that we've theoretically done right. I know you, you've only been here a few months, but we took a lot of heat and sting. It's nice to have somebody talking wisely. I've lost a lot of respect for the civil grand jury, not the criminal. This is the civil. And every year, I think, I get a letter from the grand jury asking me to nominate people for the civil grand jury. I wonder if I'm going to nominate anybody else? I don't think so, but under the process they use now, there has to be corrections made. Till then, I've, I've lost a lot of respect for the civil grand jury. And what they consider to be their role in city government, there's a lot of needy tasks. I got a copy of their report. I should have brought it in. It's thick. They have a lot of reports to do. Reacting to one resident of a city of one hundred and seventy-four thousand people who criticized us, has the gall to criticize us, and then they do all this time and effort to drag us down. It's just, like I said, I've lost a lot of respect for them. Anyhow, does somebody want to make a motion on this? I have no cards.
I'll move the item at eight B one.
I'll second. A roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Montero, Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
All right. Thank you. What is next?
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited. Time is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Thank you. Our speaker is Rafi Najarian. Are you related to this guy? Oh, yes, you are. No, never seen him before, eh?
Don't hold that against me, Mayor Weaver.
No, no personal attacks on him.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Dr. Rafi Najarian. Throughout my eighteen-year military career, I have had extensive training and practice in medical emergencies. While at work last Wednesday, however, all that training and experience was of no use to my family. When my two-and-a-half-year-old son unexpectedly fell to the ground unresponsive, my mother-in-law, who was our primary care provider, did exactly what should be done when an individual is unresponsive. She initiated the EMS, the emergency medical system. Within two rings of the phone, she was on the phone with a 911 dispatcher, and in less than two minutes, first responders from Glendale Fire Station Number Twenty-Four were at my front door. And in a little over two minutes, the capable, competent, caring hands of medical professionals from the Glendale Fire Department were tending to my son. The last thing on my mind, the last thing on any parent's mind, when your child is lying unresponsive on the ground, is, "How much are we paying that paramedic?" And the first thing on my mind, when I got home that evening after the incident, and held my son tightly in my arms, is, "We are not paying these heroes enough." Members of council, any medical professional will tell you that after an incident, the most critical factor to the survivability of a person is how fast medical treatment can be rendered. As a general rule, permanent brain damage will occur if the brain is without oxygen three to four minutes. And after ten minutes, you're likely to have almost certain brain damage in an all-reality that would result in a fatality. In recent months, members of the community have been advocating the use of private medical ambulance services to reduce the overall costs to the city of Glendale. Though an interesting notion, for the safety and well-being of the residents of Glendale, I urge you to reject these suggestions. Advocates of these proposals have simply not done their homework in making this proposal, at best, half-baked. I have a few questions for these advocates. Number one, what skill level of EMT will be staffing these ambulances? Are these advocates even aware of the different levels of EMT training? Where will, in the city, will these private ambulances be prepositioned, and how many will we need? Another question is, is what would be the projected response time for an incident? Can I expect a two-minute response with a private ambulance? I don't think so. And will these private ambulance services have the additional skills and training that our fire department have? For example, will they have any training in hazmat? Will they have any extraction or patient recovery skills? Or will they simply just be taxi services? I spoke with one of the senior ER nurses at Glendale Memorial Hospital about this issue, who coincidentally is a supervisor with a local private ambulance service, and quite honestly, would benefit financially, should the city go to a private ambulance service. This nurse stated, without reservation, that switching from the current fire department paramedic rescue ambulance system to a private ambulance system would not be recommended. Response times would go up, and the responding contract EMTs would not be as well prepared as the fire department to treat the more complicated situations. Please do not consider the advice of individuals who have neither healthcare nor city management experience. Their lack of experience and wisdom in this matter puts your family and my family at risk. The people of Glendale rely on you for their safety and well-being, and they require you to continue to make the right decisions. In conclusion, I would like to commend the heroes of the Glendale Fire Department. I'd like to say that again. I would like to commend the heroes of the Glendale Fire Department and all the first responders. I pray they never need to come to my home again, but knowing that they're available 24/7, seven days a week, is a tremendous comfort to this community member. And because of our city's first responders, I think it truly makes Glendale a jewel city. Thank you.
Thank you. I seem to recall, I think it was in 1990, 91, where I talked to a fire chief at the time, because I was considering running for council. And he says, "You know, I'm going to be pushing to bring the paramedics into a fire service." And I thought, "Well, that makes a whole lot of sense." They were stationed down on Broadway, I think, the whole private ambulance service we had. And just logically would say, if you have to make a call up in Montrose, or Chevy Chase, or Glen Oaks Canyon, or West Al, how many minutes is it going to take from Broadway to that location? Now, we have them stationed all over the city. How many lives have been saved by the fast response times? You're exactly right, Rafi. We have to be very proud of our firefighters. So thank you for coming and speaking on them. Okay, our next speaker is Arminui Alavert. I'm trying my best.
I am Glendale resident since thirty-five years.
Say your name again, for the record.
Arminui Alavert, yeah.
There you go.
And I was here last week, but I didn't know I should fill that card.
Oh, you heard.
Yeah, I came back today. Mr. Mayor, our house is very last house in the dead end, and I requested Glendale City to have extended one light in the city, in the street, because it's too dark. And next to our house is a hill, which is dark.
All right, are you on the east side, going up Glen Oaks?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
I live up there, so I know.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. And because I'm all day alone in the house, and my husband, he's working, both of us citizens of the Glendale, and we, we will be appreciate if they, the city, provide us extra light in the street, because it's too dark and, and very scary, because I saw too many wild animals coming down from the hills.
Hang by, we have your address. I'll turn it over to staff. They'll go out there, they'll assess it.
Actually, they came last.
Oh, they did? Well.
Last year, they came, the, all the city workers. I really appreciate, we request oral.
They didn't put a light in?
And, no, they said, because they have low budget, they cannot do it.
Oh, the budget.
But.
Mr. Zernwill, a new look. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Mayor.
How's the traffic up there, going into the school, okay?
Yes, yeah.
That's good.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. And next speaker, Lynn Myers.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, council members, staff, and the public. My name is Lynn Myers. I am here to speak about the first phase of Glendale's bag ordinance, which is now in effect. One thing that caught my eye in a leaflet issued by the city is this little blurb. "If you believe a store is not charging for recyclable paper bags, please contact the Public Works Department." Folks, no free bags in Glendale. The Department of Public Works is watching. I will not pay for paper bags in grocery stores, nor will I reuse bags for food that are possibly contaminated, nor will I use bags for food designed to be reused, and in order to remain sanitary, must be washed after each use to avoid possible contamination. The vast majority of these cheap reusable bags would never go through a washing machine even once without disintegrating. The charge for paper bags is ten cents per bag, and the talk in many places is to increase this charge to twenty-five cents per bag, and there is no way of knowing where it might end. Clearly, the vast majority of people, ninety-seven percent in one study, are not washing reusable bags for any number of reasons, nor will they. Bags that are used and reused over and over again for multiple purposes, accumulating filth beyond description, with the opportunity for the spread of bacteria. I observed one woman as she retrieved used diapers from one of her shopping bags and dropped them in a trash receptacle on her way into a grocery store. I have seen bags stained with what appeared to be leakage of blood and fluids from flesh, as well as other unidentifiable gunk that would make anyone gag. These same bags that the bagger handles, and then proceeds to handle the next person's groceries, passing bacteria from one person to the next. If you would really like to hear stories about these filthy bags, talk to some of the checkers and baggers. They don't want to touch these bags, and I understand some of them even have an offensive odor. Apparently, they are also being used as gym bags, or for trips to the laundromat with sweat-soaked clothing. And one can only imagine dirty underwear with God knows what. There is a growing public health concern related to filthy, reusable shopping bags, a breeding ground for dangerous bacteria and cross-contamination. There are a couple alternatives that the people in Glendale should be aware of. One alternative is to shop in the neighboring cities of Burbank and La Cañada, cities that do not have a bag ordinance and do not charge for paper bags. And I understand the idea of a bag ordinance has been completely rejected in La Cañada. So at this time, shoppers can take advantage of these two nearby cities, and I know many people who are now doing just that, including myself. The words "plastic carryout bag ban" on this city leaflet is very misleading, because although stores in Glendale cannot provide free plastic bags at checkout, consumers can provide their own plastic bags and use them. Regular disposable grocery store plastic bags can be purchased from many manufacturers, as well as retail outlets. They are available in quantity at Smart and Final in three sizes, at a huge savings over what is being charged. what is being charged for paper bags. 1,000 regular grocery store plastic bags can be purchased at Smart and Final for $29.99, less than a penny a bag. If shopping in Burbank or La Cañada is not possible and the stores continue to charge for paper bags, I would strongly urge the public to purchase and use plastic grocery bags in the interest of public health, using them once for groceries and recycling them for dog and cat cleanup, et cetera. I would also urge people to bag their own groceries at stores rather than having someone who has handled these filthy, contaminated, reusable bags transferring dangerous bacteria to your purchases with the very real possibility of sickness for you and your family. Thank you.
Let's see, Pasadena has a bag ordinance too because I... Some months ago, I was over there and I tried to...
It's a fairly lengthy list throughout California and one that's growing.
Yeah, and my wife has those plastic bags and she reuses them all the time. We got, she's got four or five. She carries them in the trunk of her car or upstairs. I've never seen any of the things that have been described. And the cashiers and handlers have bagged my groceries since my, since I'm, since my kids were alive at least. So I don't know, maybe they're occurring some places. I'm going to start asking the grocery stores that I go into, you know, are you seeing filth in here? Is there problems? I don't know, Mr.?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is not something that we've heard. There is a lot of encouragement to keep your bags clean, but the whole concept of the plastic bag ordinance and what you're getting at for environmental cleanup reasons continues, as I said, to grow. Los Angeles has passed the ordinance, the largest city in the United States to pass a plastic bag ordinance. And as you all know, Los Angeles County passed that same measure. They were in a leadership role in that particular...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Last week, councilmember Friedman, our clerk, Arti Kosakian, and Christine Baboomian-Powers, and I were in Sacramento for the League of California Cities Conference. And we had, incidentally, had a long conversation with our fellow Burbank City, one of fellow Burbank City Council people. And they're, you know, that's coming up there. Apparently, that's going to be passed in the city of Burbank.
There just is no perfect solution to anything. Even creating bicycle lanes and everything else to shut down the speeders, nothing works on anything. People will do what they want to do. They will still litter. But, you know, we'll have to deal with the situation as it arises.
But some discussion of the issue of, you know, whether there are... Someone said there are biodegradable plastic bags that are being used up north. And if indeed there is such a thing that exists...
We've heard.
Maybe that's something we can explore. That way, there is no repetitive use of something that's contaminated. And there, you know, the way our program works also, I've noticed that in supermarkets, you know, although you can't have a plastic bag, but in the produce department, you use the plastic, you know, they're available, they're out there. You put your food in there.
Yeah, the tiny ones, and then they go into the plastic bag that you bring from home.
It seems like almost like a half-measure. Doesn't seem like a comprehensive solution.
We'll be doing more eliminating of bags in the future, I know.
I think we should pass another law that says it's illegal not to wash your bags and carry human, those things that Myers was talking about.
I can't believe people are doing that.
But in all seriousness, what I would like from staff would be perhaps in the future, just a report on what you've seen, and maybe anecdotal in terms of some of the things we were talking about in passing this was the less...
Biodegradable.
The garbage, you know, we noticed that these bags were flying around. We noticed they were in the dump, creating some issues and maybe some, maybe anecdotal evidence if you have from the solid waste.
Didn't we ask you to come back sometime after the bag ordinance?
I can't recall exactly, Mr. Member. We were planning to come back to give you a report.
But let us know how it's going.
Because if you recall, we had a two-phase. We had, depending on the size of this establishment.
Right.
First with larger, then the smaller. But we plan to come back. In fact, in some manner or another, whether we do it here, whether it's something we just get to you on an annual basis or through some of our outreach efforts, we plan an annual report, statistical report on what we're doing.
I was in Rite Aid this week. Says, do you want a paper bag for 10 cents? I just smiled and says, no, I'll carry them.
But we'll come back.
But also, please include in that report, I mean, I don't want to create this whole other thing for you, but some information from the supermarkets, if they believe that this is a problem, if they've noticed some of these terrible examples, and maybe from our local hospitals, if they've seen an outbreak in bacterial infections or other sort of things, just so we can, you know, piece it all together and get a broad picture as to what's actually going on.
Yeah, let's take a look.
And the other thing, Mr. Najarian, that I believe I had promised you was to continue to, as new technology evolves...
Yeah, please.
Is to bring it up. And Najarian had asked about the biodegradable bags, but they, in essence, were not biodegradable, at least at the current time. So as new technology advances, we can bring that back and talk about it as well.
Okay. Last speaker, Margaret Hammond. Volki item pickup.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of city council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. Okay, leadoff, 818-548-3916. There is still mattresses, couches, furniture being left out on the right ways and also placed in the road in parking spaces. But my main thing in life has been for years about the San Fernando Road, the appearance of it. I talked about it before, and it's being torn up again. And particularly since Central is torn up, Brand has got problems, whatever they're doing construction, Pacific, every north and south street is being torn up. But particularly San Fernando Road. I don't understand how our educated, intelligent staff dealing with the city of LA could have been outpaced or out, I don't know what you want to call it. One put over on us by them not having the money to put in when we had the money and put our money in and did our work and even opened it up and they forced us to close it again on San Fernando Road. And also the fact that due to them and their construction, all that landscaping that was so well and beautifully done by Mr. Zern's department is half of it's dead, half of the trees are broken off and everything else. It's disgusting. Again, and it's one of the only ways to go up and down. Now, that leads me into my next thing, is the Chevy Chase bike path that is being promoted or whatever. They're talking about cutting down Chevy Chase, which is one of the, what, five north and south streets that isn't cut up right now or torn up. They're talking about cutting it down to two lane, one lane each way and the one lane for the bike path. I've talked about this before, when it was, they tried to do it on Verdugo Road from Montrose down to the College. After all, there are 15,000 minimum cars that go, use Chevy Chase per day. And after all, those automobiles pay for their licenses and we pay a lot of taxes for the gases to keep up our roads so that we can get around in our cities and live our lives, get to work, and do what we need to do. How many bikes? Maybe 10 bikes. I doubt it. I never see any on Chevy Chase. So why they are suddenly deciding that they're going to think about doing this? I know there's a survey coming up, and I objected at my Adams Hill homeowners, very, and I've objected before. I objected here at the council about the Verdugo when they wanted to do that, and that was stopped. And thank God, because I'm telling you, I have friends that live over in Highland Park and Eagle Rock, and they are going mad about the fact that they did it on York and it is horrible for traffic. And now they're talking, I talked to some people today, they're trying to do it again on Colorado. And they are just going out of their mind. They're saying, this is ridiculous. Our traffic is bad enough. What are you going to do? Cut it down to two lanes? Are you nuts? I don't know where people get away with these crazy ideas. For a handful of people, bikers and the rest of us, 15,000 or 100,000 that live in our city and use the streets every day, their automobiles, that we should be deprived of the ability to get around town easily and conveniently? I just think it's absolutely ridiculous. There's just no sense or reason to it. And I think if enough people stood up and talked about it. About the bag situation, I talked to you about it, what, five weeks ago before you went on vacation for three weeks. And the fact that it was a checker who said to me, one of the bags that I had purchased from Ross, the black plastic, and when he put my stuff in it, I mean, he said, you know, that your bag is smelling. There's something, you know, something must have leaked into the bag. And I went, oh, because I mean, I hadn't used it from the last time that I had used it. So yeah, it happens. I had a woman throw her filthy bags on my groceries. She got them and, phew, and I was really ticked off and threw them back where they belong. I was going to throw them on the floor, but then I thought, no. So I mean, there are problems with it. And this was a checker who brought it to my attention about the plastic bag. So now I do want to bring a more pleasant thing up, and it's the Glendale Historical, the classic Casa Verdugo home tour. And it's going to be this Sunday from 11 till 4 p.m. And it's going to present homes from the Verdugo area, they will be from the older area of Glendale. You can purchase tickets, if you wish, at 818-242-7447. It's going to be five homes, and it's a walking tour. You don't have to have buses or anything. You can just park and walk from one home to the other. These aren't the big mansions. They're the homes that were built in the early days of working people and so forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Central is done other than raising the manholes and striping, as far as I can tell, and maybe planting trees and stuff.
Mr. Mayor, we are essentially, we wanted to be, as you recall, well out of there before the Thanksgiving holiday wraparound.
And one last thing I just wanted to say, I can't let it go. I said the hated Brooklyn Dodgers, they're LA. Well, I'm an Angel fan, the Brooklyn Dodgers, the LA Dodgers better win the World Series this year. I'll be rooting for them. Yes, sir.
Mr. Weaver, follow on your comments on Central. I do want to compliment staff for the absolutely beautiful streetlights that you have on Central. They are very classic style. I think they really do the city proud. If you haven't noticed them, they've just been up maybe a week or so. They're very, very attractive and I think fit very well in with the image of Glendale. So whoever picked them out, I know it didn't come to council because we would have thought about it for a couple of weeks, but somebody made the executive decision.
And it wasn't me. Somebody...
That was smart. Let us get involved. But it is the entrance way to Glendale. You get off at Central from the 134 East. Turn down, that's what you see. That's the entry to Glendale, that location. Okay, if there's nothing more, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, that's a new business.
Oh, yes.
I move that with respect to claim number C11-5589 filed by the city of Glendale with the city of Los Angeles, the offer to compromise and settle said claim regarding a dispute under transmission service agreements 10007 and 10932, the quote TSAs, end quote, for the net amount of $1,610,820 is hereby accepted, subject to the terms of a settlement agreement and amendment one to each of the TSAs with the city of Los Angeles, which the city manager is hereby authorized to execute.
A roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Montero, Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
All right. A motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
We adjourned at 7:26 p.m.